Order the San Carlos City Council meeting for November 14th, 2016. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any changes to the order of the agenda tonight?
No changes from staff this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Any of my colleagues want to make a change? If not, we'll move on to Item 4, Council Communications and Announcements, and we'll start down here with Matt. And Matt is waving me off, so we'll move over to this end and we'll go with Ron.
Can you give me a second?
Sure.
Turn on the microphone and find my notes. Sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I have nothing tonight.
Okay.
At least I'm ready, but you have extra time for your videos. You have more videos over here?
I have no video. I do have some visual aids, but no videos tonight.
I have lots of paper here if anybody needs paper.
Mark?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I have no comments tonight.
Okay. And Ron?
You know?
I can make a few comments and we can kick it back over.
Why don't you make a few comments? I think I've got one thing, so, thank you.
So, I just wanted to share a little information on a couple of community events I've attended and a couple of meetings I've had. We had the pleasure of helping to cut the ribbon with the San Carlos Chamber of Commerce of The Wine Project, which is a new restaurant and wine bar on Laurel Street, and the proprietor, Eric, there is a resident, or he's not a resident of San Carlos, but he lives close by in Foster City, and I think it's a great place and I'm excited to help welcome them. I saw Dave Pucci in the audience. Dave, I don't know if you know, there's somebody new trying out for Fire Chief in San Carlos, so, this is my son. I just wanted to say, you know, since our last meeting, we had Halloween, and I think we do a great Halloween in San Carlos. We had the Goblin Walk, and I want to thank the firefighters and everyone else who helped participate in the Goblin Walk. I think it was a great event. And then Eucalyptus Street, man, for those of you who are out, thousands of people on the street, the residents there created a Star Wars-themed extravaganza with their own Ewok Village. It was pretty amazing, so thanks for everybody for helping to put on a great Halloween this I had an opportunity to attend the Code for America Annual Conference, which was held in Oakland this year. Code for America is an organization that helps improve government services online, helps work with local governments, the federal government, to come up with projects to make apps better, make websites better, make self-service government work. It was a pretty inspiring conference and dovetails nicely with the kickoff of our project to redesign our website, which Kristin is leading. Mark and I had a chance to spend some time with staff and our consultant this afternoon talking about ideas for improving the San Carlos website, which has gotten a little long in the tooth, and there's a lot of opportunities to improve it. And then, Kristin, we're having a public meeting, is that right? Can you tell me when that is?
Wednesday at 7:00 p.m.
When, at the library?
Yes.
So, we have a meeting at Wednesday, 7:00 p.m. at the library, if anyone would like to come out and provide some ideas about how to improve the San Carlos website, the City of San Carlos website. The Peninsula Clean Energy Organization, of which I'm a member, held its board retreat on Saturday. We spent about six hours together talking about how to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and improve electricity service for people on the peninsula. Peninsula Clean Energy is off to a great start. The opt-out rate so far is seven tenths of 1%, so over 99% of people are sticking with Peninsula Clean Energy, which means they get greener power at a reduced cost. We talked about the mission of the organization, our goals, and just had a really nice time together. I had an opportunity to attend the Hiller Aviation Museum Aviation Dreams Benefit Gala on behalf of the city on Saturday night, and this is an annual fundraiser for the Hiller Aviation Museum, which is a great facility in our community. There was some really inspiring talks from some younger people who had worked at Hiller, and that had been a launching pad for them to pursue careers in aviation. One young woman who's pursuing careers near traffic controller, and one gentleman who is an aeronautical engineer. Our former mayor, Don Eaton, served as the auction, as part of the auctioneer team, and there was a lot of good fun had by all and some funds raised to support Hiller. Lastly, I had an opportunity this week to address the Lions Club, who's here tonight and who we're going to hear from in a little bit. And so with that, Ron, are you ready to go?
I have just one comment. One of the meetings that I attend on a monthly basis is the Caltrain Electrification Progress Task Force, and just one thing to report, they, all the contracts have been signed. Construction is supposed to be starting next March. A lot of infrastructure has been happening over the last couple of years that you haven't seen, mostly because it involves the laying of fiber optic cable and a lot of things that go on underground, but starting next March, you should see some actual construction of poles and transfer stations and that sort of thing. It's all on schedule, so, we think, to be completed in 2021, and Caltrain plans a weekly update at their website, and you can find it at caltrain.com/calmod, and they promise to update it weekly. Plus, they're going to have a 24-hour hotline, an email, and a dedicated outreach team for anybody who has any issues with the electrification process, and that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Ron. Item 4B, Staff Comments on City Administrative Business. Mr. Malkey.
I was going to mention the website needs assessment for the community on Wednesday, so I've got nothing else.
All right. And then do we have a report from Mr. Rubens on the League of California Cities Conference?
Yes, I do. This chair was not able to attend, but I reviewed the papers, and there were 16 papers that were submitted at the conference, and some of them I'll cover in a follow-up memo about litigation update, but I thought, one of the papers I'd highlight on is, I've adapted it from a presentation that was made there, and it's Brown Act and Digital Media. And I thought the part of the presentation, I mean, you're all familiar with the Brown Act, so part of the presentation is a little redundant, but the main issue is what is a meeting? And a meeting is a majority of the members of the body at the same time and place to hear, discuss, deliberate, or take action on any item that is within the subject matter of the jurisdiction of the body, so, city business in our case. So, the serial meetings in the digital age is really, was the part that interested me most about this paper, and so there's two types of serial meetings you should be worried about, and one is called the daisy chain meeting, where Councilmember A talks to Councilmember B, who then talks to Councilmember C, and then that creates a meeting under the Brown Act. So, we've talked about this before, so you try to avoid those types of things and only talk with one other council member about a meeting, and then maybe make some inquiry if something in the conversation might make you suspicious about somebody else having expressed an opinion on that subject. In the hub-and-spoke contacts, the other type of serial meeting is where one member basically reaches out to many of the other council members to create a meeting. They reach, in a five-member body, that would be reaching out to two other persons and having a, creating a meeting in that way. So, the, in the old days, before we had digital media, there was basically four ways to have meetings. One's probably really antiquated, but in-person meetings, telephonic meetings, letters, telegrams. But in the digital age, we're talking, we've expanded that. In the '90s world, it was emails and perhaps texts, when the phone started to add text Now we have, in the digital media age, we have blogs, where council members or members of the public have a blog, and they talk about their opinions and present information, and it's a very effective way to communicate to constituents, and they have common features, which is a comment feature, excuse me, that is the area where people can go back and forth about subject matters. Well, where people can get in trouble with blogs is if a council member has a blog and then other council members decide to chime in on that, you start to potentially be able to have a meeting. Then the area of Facebook, I thought this was particularly interesting, is the features of Facebook, and people are generally familiar with that, I would think, at this point, but people have a wall on Facebook, and they post pictures and talk about things that they're interested in, and people can like that by just pressing a button. You can say, "I like that." But what if the, what if the post is a query or a question? "What do you think about this?" And people say "like." If they respond to that, and then another two and three council members respond to that with a "like," the paper at the league conference opined that that could potentially be a Brown Act violation, because those "likes" were developing a consensus about that item, so the advice in there was to be careful about using "likes" and "comments" in the world of Facebook. And the issue of Twitter, although I don't, I'm not a Twitter user, maybe some other members of the council, but this issue of the 140 characters of texts that you can put out that might be an opinion or talk about something that involves the city, and then people can retweet that tweet, and people could be friends with someone who is a Twitter, or, excuse me, a follower of someone who's on Twitter, that pretty soon you have too many people following you, and then retweeting or commenting on your tweet, you can definitely have a Brown Act problem. That was the issue that was talked about. So, there are other, you know, there are other types of social, digital media, there's Snapchat and Instagram, that were also covered in the paper, but I tried to make this as short as I could for this agenda item. There's another issue that I think is important about public records, so once you have a, once you start using this technology, it's possible that the city would get requests for public records about your digital media, and the, usually it's a private device, and there's a case in San Jose right now that is going to be before the Supreme Court soon that talks about whether or not public business on a private device is subject to the Public Records Act, but this is just sort of a heads-up, that that decision's coming out there, and if you're a heavy user of digital media, there is a chance that some of the content on your digital media accounts could become public records. And so I've got on the slide now, best practices. Be careful of using social media to, because it might create a Brown Act problem, but Brown Act has some limitations that really were not intended by the words of the act right now. It's basically this new technology that we're trying to use industrial age issues to try and shoehorn the current digital world in there, and, you know, Facebook's wall, you know, that's like a bulletin board, I guess you could call it, and so they're trying to use by analogy those types of limitations on the Brown Act. And again, the courts are just starting to get into this. There was a case in the paper that talked about the Facebook "likes" are a form of speech, so that, that's why, that's where, if you go by extension, you can get into forming a consensus by using the "like" or the "comment" feature. And one-way communication, the advice you've heard from me before, is generally appropriate. It's the collaborative information and that creates the problem, so if you're, if you're on social media and you, or you have a blog and you just post information, that is fine. Opinion sometimes can get you in more problems, because it opens the door to people opining on your opinion, and, but that's still okay under the Brown Act, just to post your opinion. And we also have, just one last thing, we've already, we already have some of this in our code of conduct. We do prevent people from using their digital media during a meeting, et cetera, and then being aware of the Brown Act limitations, but really, I thought this was probably the most pertinent paper, so that's why I focused on it. So, expect to see some more information from me on the litigation and municipal law update from, that was presented at the league conference. But that's the end of my presentation tonight. Thanks.
Great. Thanks, Greg. Very interesting. Mark, you had a question or comment?
Yes, a question for Greg sparked by a couple of the things he said there. There's an aspect of the, actually, this is the second time today I'm asking you a question about the aspect of the Brown Act, and after all the years I've been officially, I think I know this stuff forwards and backwards. The idea of transmitting information through liking or posts or whatnot, I clearly understand the notion of, and I understand the concept and the law of preventing hub-and-spoke meetings or serial meetings, where I talk to Ron and Ron talks to Cameron, okay? But if I talk to somebody on the street, and I don't ask them or imply anything for them to do, and they go talk to Ron and say, "Hey, you know, another one of your colleagues said X," and he goes, and there's somebody else in the group, and somebody, and Ron says, "Oh, that sounds interesting," and then another person goes, the other person goes, not the same original person, goes and says to another council member, "Hey, you know, I've heard that a couple of count..." To me, this issue of doing it electronically, while admittedly it's a lot easier, what I just described is inherent in human communication, has nothing to do with the electronic media. So, I'm just curious about whether that aspect of things was addressed in the Brown Act, or whether it was just assumed that that happens so infrequently, when you have to actually talk to somebody, that they're not worried about it?
Well, I skipped over some of this in the presentation in the interest of time, but it is possible that a third-party, non-community member could potentially be considered to be part of that spoke and creating, providing information to a majority of the council, which could then be considered a Brown Act violation. So, one of the things in the paper was that the members of the public that might be doing that aren't as aware of the Brown Act as public officials might be, so as public officials, we have to be careful that we aren't participating in something like that. Now, would there be a fine or a penalty where it turned out somebody heard what somebody else said based upon a third party? You know, "Don't tell me that." You know, "What are you supposed to do in that type of circumstance?" But, you know, it, there are some hypothetical ways that that could be a Brown Act violation. And then the other question you had, I...
That's okay. I actually thought it was just one.
Okay.
I'd like to follow up with you anyway, just chat about this, because I'm curious. Thanks.
Okay. Thanks, gentlemen. We'll move on to our presentation this evening. We have a presentation of a donation in the amount of $2,000 from the San Carlos Lions Club for the purchase of a ham radio for the Second Community Emergency Response Team trailer. And I'd like to invite all, or some, or of you to come up and to make that presentation. Good evening, Scott.
Good evening. Would somebody like to come up and accept the presentation?
I think we'll send the mayor.
The mayor should do that.
Oh, wait a minute. I'm sorry, guys. That's not going to fit in the ATM.
Yeah. Try cashing it at the bank.
You'd be surprised what they cash.
Yeah.
I know.
Erase it. So, I'm up here on behalf of the San Carlos Lions Club, and one of the items, first of all, let me tell you a little bit about the San Carlos Lions Club. We are a community service organization, one of many in San Carlos, that, San Carlos, that does tremendous work throughout the community, and I was talking to one of the firefighters, Kristi Adonis, who runs the CERT program, and I was talking to her and asking her how the Lions could help, and many years ago, I broached the subject with her about ham radios for the CERT trailers, and she told me they had one in one trailer, but not one in the second trailer, so went back to the San Carlos Lions Club, and they enthusiastically supported the idea of making sure that we had that communication amongst the city and the CERT trailers, especially in light of the fact that if there is an incident, we'd like to have everybody communicating with one another. So, tonight I have a check for $2,000 for the purchase of a CERT ham radio for the second CERT trailer.
Wow.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, guys, very much. You know, I think the Lions Club and all of our service clubs have always shown a major commitment to giving back to our community, and I think this is a great demonstration of that, so thank you very much on behalf of the whole city, and good night. Okay. We'll move on now to Item 6, Public Comment for Items Not on the Agenda. I have two speaker cards. Did you have an additional speaker card? Okay. Our first speaker tonight is Bill Barone. Good evening, Bill.
Mayor, Council. My name is Bill Barones. I live at 793 Elm Street, and I'm here representing the Elm Street Condominium Homeowners Association. I live in a clearly residential building with 23 other families. We put our waste in a 96-gallon black cart. The waste is no different from that of residents who live in a building with only four units. But for some reason that I find inexplicable, we're charged 26% more for an identical cart containing identical waste. Equal treatment is all that we're seeking from you. Two issues that I did not mention in my letter, that I've given some thought to since that time, recognizing multiple-family dwellings as residential property, not commercial, would result in a reduction in overall revenue. But as I recall, the staff report that you received about a month ago indicated that at the end of 2017, there would be some, I think the number was 347,000, but something in that neighborhood, positive balance in the solid waste fund. The other point was that I've become aware that there are some multiple-family dwellings that use one and, perhaps even two gallon, excuse me, two cubic yard containers, and they're not presently part of your residential schedule, so that when you make this change, as I hope you do, it would be necessary, I think, to include them in your residential rate schedule. Again, I want to emphasize that what we're seeking from you is equal treatment from one residence to another. If I can answer any questions, elaborate further?
No, we have your comments. I appreciate it. I believe that item's coming on our next agenda, is that right? All right. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Our next speaker tonight is our friend from the Chamber of Commerce, Paula Abjer-Moffett. Good evening, Paula.
I know. I changed out of my Lions shirt, and now I'm representing the board. It's coincidental that this has been planned for months for me to come talk to you. Before I start, though, I do want to thank you all for your support of the chamber, as well as the staff. We really appreciate it, and we couldn't function without it. You've both, you've been sent some memos, and I'm not going to go over every detail. I just want to highlight a few of the important things. So, on December 2nd, Business and Government Roundtable is going to happen in the library, and the program is going to be about illegal drug use in San Mateo County. I think this is a really important topic, especially with the propositions that just passed, and as you know, you're all invited, as well as the community in general. I'm going to skip around to December 11th, because you had mentioned the Goblin Walk. Well, we got a little jealous. It was such a fun event that we decided to create something for the adults to enjoy. So, it's going to be called the Holiday Wine Stroll. It's going to be on Sunday, December 11th. It's going to follow the Farmer's Market. We've got 20 downtown businesses that are going to be pairing up with 20 boutique wineries and wineries here in town, pouring one-ounce pours to those people who want to participate that are over 21. We have a lot of security in place. We'll be checking IDs and wearing bracelets, so you don't need to worry about minors walking around downtown drinking. You do need to worry about those over 50, drinking too much, but we'll get that taken care of. We expect to have over 500 people attend the event. The streets will be open again after Farmer's Market, so it'll be a fun event. This poster will be hanging out in your lobby when I leave. On Sundays, the Farmer's Market is still continuing to get great crowds. As you know, the produce is changing as the winter months come. This will be our first winter having a Farmer's Market, so we're very excited about it, and on Sundays, we're continuing with live music in Harrington Park when we can. We've had a lot of parents and people in the community ask about youth, youth performing, so we're going to have a youth rock showcase on Sunday, December 11th. And then on December 18th, there's going to be a winter holiday event, and the chamber, along with the San Carlos Lions and the Kiwanis Club, is going to be providing entertainment in the park, as well as Santa will be there, if anybody wants to bring their kids for pictures. We will also be collecting food for the Carrying Cupboard and gifts for the Service League. So, and if you're not familiar with the Carrying Cupboard, that is a joint venture between the city and the three service groups in our community to provide seniors with additional food. So, if you have any questions for me?
Go ahead, Ron.
The Wine Stroll is on Sunday, the 11th?
Yes, so we're going to overlap a little bit with the Farmer's Market, because it's going to be from 1 to 5, and our Farmer's Market ends at 2.
Okay. That was my question, the time.
But we're also not going to just be on Laurel Street. We have businesses on San Carlos Avenue and El Camino that'll be participating, so people will be walking about. We're hoping it's going to also promote, the reason we're doing it in December as well, is because we want people to shop on Laurel.
Great. Thanks.
All right.
Any other questions?
I think we're good. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to Item 7, Approval of the Consent Calendar. Consent items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council staff or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. Is there anyone wishing to remove an item from the consent calendar? Matt's light is on.
Yeah, the Adopt Ordinance Number 1514.
Which item is that?
H. Yeah, H.
H, okay. Any...
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull out Item K.
Okay. H and K. Anything else? All right. If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the consent calendar items excluding items H and K.
And we do, we do have one ordinance that's in the consent calendar to read.
I apologize. Thank you, Mr. Attorney.
When they pulled one.
Well, that's the, was, Adopt Ordinance Number 1515, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, amending San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 15.34, Residential Inspection Program, requiring mandatory balcony and deck inspections for Group R-2 occupancies covered under the Residential Inspection Program.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Gocut?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
And Mayor Johnson?
Yes. Why don't we take these right now, just to get them out of the way? Item H, Adopt an Ordinance, Amending Chapter 8.15 to the San Carlos Municipal Code Establishing Commercial Linkage Fees for New Commercial Developments in the Commercial Linkage Fees for New Commercial Developments in the City. Matt, did you want a presentation, or did you want to just make a comment, or?
I wasn't here for that item, and had I been here, I would have voted no, so I needed to pull it, so I can register my no vote.
Do I have a motion on item H?
Move approval of item 8H, 7H, excuse me.
I think we need to read the ordinance.
You're right. You'd think I'd remember that after I was reminded that I missed it the first time. Adopt Ordinance Number 1514, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, adding Chapter 8.51 to the San Carlos Municipal Code, Establishing Commercial Linkage Fees for New Commercial Developments in the City.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any public comment? Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Gocott?
No.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
And Mayor Johnson?
Yes. And now we'll take item K, Adopt a Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute an Agreement for Professional Services for a Citywide Wayfinding Study Not to Exceed $84,130 with Hunt Design. Mark, how would you like to take this one?
I'd just like to make a brief comment, and that's basically to the effect, I've had a lengthy discussion with Jeff Malpe about this, and while he sort of half convinced me of the importance of doing this, the main thing I wanted to register a concern about, or not an observation about, is for $84,000, we could have funded the, his best staff had estimated at the time, the sidewalk repair bills for the City of San Carlos for the 2016, 2017 fiscal year. And just like I support this, I'm just surprised we didn't do the other. I'm glad that we're going to be taking it up again in due course, but I'd also remind my colleagues that there are people out there right now who are being in a position of having to pay for something that maybe will change, and they won't have to pay in the future.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Would anyone care to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I will move that we adopt, let's see.
7K.
7K, item 7K. Do we need to say anything else about it?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Gocott?
No.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to item eight, Reports to Council. This evening, we have a report to council on Ruby the Tree. Mr. Walter.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, Jay Walter, Public Works Director. And tonight, a brief update on Ruby the Tree. The old oak at the corner of Ruby and Eaton Avenue in San Carlos, which we had at first, as you can, as I'll show in the slides, at first we had indicated that we needed to remove and replace the sidewalk around the tree, which had created controversy over the removal, the potential removal of the tree. Since that time, we have made some significant progress. So again, just for some to understand the problem a little bit better, this picture doesn't show it very well, but essentially, the way that the sidewalk slopes in this certain situation is, it's steeply inclined from the tree towards the gutter, and then in both directions away from it. So it represented a significant problem from the standpoint of accessibility for pedestrians as they would go by that. So, since the last time we spoke, we've met on site with Dave and Leslie DeChristofre October 11th to talk about the tree and to decide where our next steps were going to be. The DeChristofrees couldn't be here tonight, but their daughter is here, and so she's representing the family well. And at this meeting, it was also attended by Councilmember Collins and Councilmember Gocott. We talked about the situation at this location, and we were also joined by two professional arborists, those folks who make their living being experts about trees. And we talked about the situation and what needed to be done at that time. So after that meeting occurred, we went ahead and had our contractor remove the sidewalk from over the top of the roots and the area next to the root crown, which had been uplifted. And the DeChristofrees removed all the rocks around the base of the tree in order for the arborist to get a better look at the tree roots. And so essentially, the location looks like this now, as the concrete has been removed, and the rocks, as you can see on the backside, have been pushed back away from the tree. And the arborist then went about being able to inspect that area right around the base of the tree. And from their report, there was some root bark decay noticed, but healthy tissue overall on the tree, the base of the tree, the root areas, the root crown in fair condition with no dead roots. They did some special arborist tests that helped them to determine that there's plenty of good, sound wood in that tree. Overall, healthy but aged tree. So the consensus from the arborists is, this is definitely a tree that can be saved with some work in the area around the base of that. And so just kind of looking here at the area in particular, you can see some of the roots that were exposed that had been previously covered up by sidewalk and the curb and gutter. And those roots, as previously noted, were found to be in very, very good, healthy shape. So what can we do? We talked with the arborists. Some additional trimming is needed on the tree, and that's something that we talked about with the DeChristofrees, and they're willing to do that. And the sidewalk, at this point, we can replace, but we'll be moving the sidewalk edge about 12 inches further out from the existing root crown. And that gives us enough room, and it gives us the clearance that we need without disturbing the major roots, to be able to replace the sidewalk at a grade that allows for the sidewalk accessibility that we really need at this location. We end up with a slightly larger bulb out in the curb area near that corner, but that's okay. We didn't want to go out too far, because we ended up with some drainage problems and trapping water, stormwater runoff, that has the potential to be a problem in and around the roots of a large tree. So the next steps, essentially, we'll be requesting a quote from our contractor, and once we have that quote, we can give them a notice to proceed. It'll take about two weeks to complete the work. And then we'll be back to the council in 2017 to talk about heritage tree guidelines as it relates to sidewalk removal. So as we encounter these types of situations, we'll have some working guidelines and some good direction and priority from the council. So that's kind of where we are today with Ruby the Tree.
All right. Thank you, Jay. Questions for Jay? Mark?
Not even sure I needed to press the button. Thank you, Jay. Good presentation. By the way, just out of curiosity, do you know if any of the other heritage trees in town are named?
I don't know of any that are.
Okay.
But I wouldn't be surprised.
Might be an interesting youth contest of some kind, name the trees. The question I had actually is, you, I didn't quite, you may have answered on your last slide, but I didn't quite understand it. The last bullet point, Heritage Tree Guidelines Review with Council in 2017. Are you looking for input from us now about what we would like staff to study and bring back to us, or are we to wait for that meeting and then give you that kind of input?
Tonight was really just to be an update on Ruby, and then we would be coming back to you with a study session to be able to talk about those things that are important about our heritage trees, and how that relates to our sidewalk infrastructure and guidance from council.
Okay. I think I get that. I am, however, going to ask, and if nobody else is interested, then staff won't have to do it. When that discussion comes back, Greg, I would be interested in making sure that the presentation staff puts together has information on the scope of what can and can't be done involving these kind of heritage trees that exist on private property. I mean, Ruby is sort of special in the sense that it was on public property, I think, right? It was, it's...
Essentially, it's within the public right of way, yes.
It's in the public right of way, yes. But there's another class of heritage trees that have been subjects of issues before in town not too long ago, which have to do with trees that are on private property. And I frankly just don't understand what the law is like there, and I'd like to make sure that I get educated about that, because it may affect what I want to ask that we do.
Yeah, I have no issue with educating ourselves a bit more. And I'm just trying to recall, we had our council retreat just a couple weeks ago. Did we, Jeff, maybe you can remind us, did we discuss this item and what we decided in terms of the, how it was going to come back to us? And did we just say, hey, we'll have a study session in 2017 about our heritage tree learnings?
Yeah, there was an interest among the council to have a discussion.
Okay, so that's what I thought. This is essentially reflecting the conversation that we had at the retreat. That was my understanding.
This particular item was related?
I mean, no, no, that's bullet point that says heritage tree guidelines to review. Yeah.
That's exactly what that council...
Okay. And I don't see any objection to talking about what the rules are as they relate to private property. Okay. Any additional questions for Jay? I'll just say, you know, I appreciate, you know, the staff. Well, I do want to personally say I appreciated you reaching out to the family, your apology at the last council meeting when we discussed this, you know, you working with the family and in an effort to try and, you know, make this situation, which I know caused some consternation to them, to make it right. And so I appreciate you and your staff working on that. And I just want to see if there's any public comment on this issue, if you wanted to say any words, or...
I just want to say thank you on behalf of my parents.
Do you want to come on up just to the mic, just, I know, otherwise, it's not on the record, so.
My name is Tara Berta, and I just want to say thank you on behalf of my parents for looking into this further. They were very willing to, you know, remove the tree if it was needed removing, but it didn't, and they've been taking care of it for 32 years and maintaining it. So thank you on behalf of them for considering this.
All right. Well, thanks very much, and thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are no other comments, we'll move on to item nine, our study session. We have a report to council on the environmental impact study for additional lighting at Burton and Highlands Park. Good evening, Ms. Newby.
Good evening, Mayor Johnson and fellow council members. So tonight, I'm going to provide to you some information on the current field use and demand, and an upcoming project of an environmental review of additional lighting at both Burton and Highlands Parks. So just some background, as you can imagine, the field demand in San Carlos is really high. We serve, I'm sorry, we have over 18,000 hours of annual permitted use on our seven main athletic fields annually. There are over 8,000 organized sport participants that use our fields each year, and this is an increase of nearly 40% of what was calculated in the Mahady Field Study back in 2001. Due to our priorities and field allocation outlined in our field use policy, non-traditional sports such as lacrosse, field hockey, as well as Pop Warner football teams cannot be accommodated. Parks and Recreation programs are limited, and we are unable to expand our youth and adult programming. With the change of the school district dismissal time this year, we've actually lost 30 minutes per day of available scheduled time. In addition to the challenges of meeting the current demand, each year we see an increase in field requests from the traditional sports such as soccer, baseball, and softball. And in more recent years, we've received field requests for off-season field use for these traditional sports, for expanded programming opportunities from which these, from these main sports groups, which we're not able to accommodate. So looking back into some research our department and city has done, the city's invested in two reports which have evaluated our fields and facilities in San Carlos. The Field Use and Agronomic Specifications Report in 2001, performed by Mark Mahady and Associates, evaluated the current use, the impact of each sport on our fields, best practices for maintaining quality playing fields, and provided recommendations for projected future demand. The Parks Open Space Buildings and Other Recreational Facilities Master Plan, completed in 2008, took inventory of existing parks and facilities and provided recommendations for future planning. Taking into consideration the limited available land in San Carlos to build new fields, both reports recommended, both ports indicated maximizing the available time on our existing fields, and recommended to add additional lighting on both the east side of Burton and stadium field at Highlands Park to accommodate the growing demand in our community. So funding was approved in this fiscal year in the amount of $250,000 for the environmental review of additional lighting at these two fields. Ideally, we would like to begin this environmental review process in early 2017. The environmental review will cover traditional elements, including aesthetics, noise, traffic, and parking. The additional lighting on these two fields could add approximately 1,000 hours of use annually. This project would last just about one year to fully analyze all of these elements, and after tonight, our plan is to come to you on the next council meeting for an item on consent of approval of a consultant to facilitate this project. So at this time, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions, Mark?
Yeah, thank you, Amy. Good presentation. Just a quick question, I want to make sure I put something, put some numbers together that I think I heard you say correctly. What was that, since the assessment, I guess in the early aughts, about the level of utilization that basically the demand for athletic field space has got by 40%? 40%?
From what was calculated in 2001.
Oh, what was calculated, then, for what we'd have to provide today?
For what we are providing today.
We are providing today. So I guess what I'm getting at is, that sounds like there's a, what, shortfall of supply on the order of 40% from what we expected, or what we had hoped?
Sure, yeah, you could say that.
Wow, I knew it was bad. I didn't realize it was that bad. The other question I had has to do with the actual amount of athletic field space that's available, and I think I heard you say that actually, what, it's declined recently because of the change in the school districts. What's the trend of that been over the comparable period of time? Has it more or less held steady and just gone down a little bit recently, or?
That's one element that changed this year was the school dismissal time, and so losing 30 minutes per day of available scheduled time.
Okay.
Quite to two and a half hours a week on each field.
And in, but in general, it's, I mean, I don't recall, we haven't built any new fields or expanded anything, so, okay, so the only thing that's happened is this recent decline of playing time?
Yes.
Okay. Hmm. The, I may have another question, but for now, I'll pass. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Mark. Bob?
If I understand this right, you said 18,000 hours, basically now, is what we have?
Correct.
So if we, if we utilize, if this comes to fruition, you're adding about 1,000 hours, you indicated?
That's an estimate, yes.
Yeah, so which would be about 5.5%?
Correct.
Okay, just want to understand. I wish it was 10, or 20, or 30% more, but it's, we get what we get. Okay, thanks.
So my question is about the neighbors, and have they been involved in this proposal yet? And if not, what, how do you see engaging the neighbors throughout the process?
Definitely will be a community process at this point. We have not moved forward with the consultants. So once that happens and a contract is signed, we'll begin that process, which should take about a year. And in that process, there will be community meetings where people will be notified to come and provide their input and learn about the project.
Okay. Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, just one, just following up on Cameron's question. You say there'll be community meetings. How will those be noticed? Will they be noticed to just the immediate areas adjacent to the parks, or will they be a city-wide, will be on the website, all of the above?
Yeah, typically, on a project of this nature, we'll do city-wide, and then also mailing, as well as more focused mailings around the affected areas to ensure that those people are definitely hearing the invitation multiple times, and then we'll put it out on social media, as well as our electronic e-notify. We'll have announcements likely at council meetings about upcoming community meetings on the issue.
Great, thanks.
All right. Mark, do you have an additional question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Amy, with the, with the, that growth in demand that's occurred, to what extent do you hear about or have to deal with what in a retail business environment would be called a stockout? In other words, where there's, there's somebody who simply can't get playing time? Or are there sports, some of the local sports organizations, have they limited enrollment in their programs, or said, I don't know, that, you know, you can enroll for two years, but nothing more than that, because we've got a lot of other people that we want to have an opportunity to play this sport, whatever it is? So... whatever it is. So, are those kind of things happening where people are trying to manage the demand because the supply's not there?
Not so much. We haven't had to come to that yet to limit the enrollment in the sport organizations. Typically, what you would see in years past, our sports have a main playing season, and that's the one time a year that they're playing. What we're continuing to see now is the sports are going year-round. So there's the main season and there's the off-season, where baseball's competing in off months with soccer and winter sports and vice versa. Soccer is not just played in the fall and winter, they play in the spring and are competing with softball and baseball. So it's that kind of increase in the opportunity, programming opportunities that we're finding really challenging to accommodate their request and their need.
But it sounds like so far, at least, you've been able to accommodate almost everybody?
Yeah, and it is, you know, our athletics coordinator spends a lot of time working with these youth sport organizations to find practice time. And it isn't always necessarily what their ideal scenarios look like. They are scaled back, but, to some degree, but they're all able to find practice time. It just isn't what they're, you know, on their wish list or what they ideally want for their teams and their organizations.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. We have one member of the public who's wanting to speak on this item, and I'd like to invite him up now. Scott Odom. Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor, Council. I'm Scott Odom. I am the president of San Carlos Little League. I'm here tonight to voice our support of the EIR and the addition of the lights at Flanagan and stadium fields. This past spring season in 2016, we had close to 1,000 San Carlin's play in Little League baseball. So as a board, and I think parents alike, we realize the demand that that amount of citizens, you know, puts on the fields that we have. So we see that the addition of the lights will definitely lessen that demand, enable us to address what Amy cited with what we see this next season, having to start practices at four o'clock realistically, once kids get out to allow them some time. Where that can come into play is where there's a, a practice and then there's a game. We might possibly have to shorten the duration of a practice, which is typically 90 minutes, and much rather shorten that than a game. So having this, particularly in, end of February, beginning of March, before the time moves forward, we can ensure that we can get those, those in. And I think plus, there's the consideration that it's fun to play under the lights. You know, we have a Friday night lights up at Highlands for about six Fridays, and I know that softball has been trying to do the same. So, being able to use stadium at the same time that we're using Highlands North, would just create a, you know, a much more festive atmosphere. So, that's it. Any questions?
I think we got it.
All right.
All right, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no other questions, no other speakers, we will move on to new business. Item 10A, consideration of adopting a resolution, adopting the hazard mitigation plan update. Mr. Pucci?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm joined tonight by Jess Sarudi of TetraTech, who's the consulting company that we worked with to develop this plan. And I'm here to report to you tonight about the hazard mitigation plan update. So what we're going to talk about is exactly what a hazard mitigation plan is, why we're required to do an update, and give you some background on where we were and where we've come from. Describe the public outreach that we did as part of this plan, and then what maintenance is of this plan, and then you'll see what the actions identified hazards for the city of San Carlos are. The, one thing that you'll notice as we proceed through the presentation here is, we did something different this time on this hazard mitigation plan. The hazard mitigation plan is required by the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000. And what that plan says is that cities have to look at their city infrastructure and decide if there are facilities or things that the city owns that we can repair, reinforce, to prevent further damage during a disaster. So historically, this started in 2000, the first set of plans came out in 2005. Cities would work independently of each other and develop these plans. What we did that was different this time is we worked with all of our planning partners throughout the county, and we divided the plan into two volumes. So volume one is the countywide plan that covers events that would cover the entire county. And then we drilled down further for volume two, which really gets down into San Carlos city specifics. So what a hazard mitigation plan is, is that process of, it's a cost benefit analysis. Then this plan really is a grant management tool. What we do is we look at critical infrastructure for the city, and we identify those projects that we think that we can reinforce so they won't fail in the first place. So some examples that you might see of that is a water system where it can be reinforced, like the hatchet-y water system you may have seen in the news lately. San Francisco's going through the process of getting grant money and reinforcing that entire system. So that way, when there is a earthquake along the San Andreas, the system won't fail in the first place. So they identified that this is likely to fail during an earthquake, how much it would cost to repair, and then keep it from failing in the first place. So really, it extends to a lot of different costs. So if we can identify a project that provides too much life hazard, and we can reinforce it, we can justify a grant application that way. Also, this gives us compliance under the Mitigation Act, which makes us eligible for grant funding. So when we get to the next step of this process is, we can identify a project, and we can see grant funding. And typically, it's a 75-25 split between the federal government and the local government to repair those projects. So we worked, it was, it was a great project. And one of the strengths of this process was, is that we were working with every city in San Mateo County, with the exception of San Mateo and Foster City who were just ahead of us. They were working on their own plan, independent of the rest of the county, plus 10 special districts and unincorporated San Mateo County. So the process was a really good strength for us because we were working together and brought up a lot of conversation about emergency management in general throughout San Mateo County. Part of the, part of this process is public outreach. It's a requirement from FEMA. And again, I apologize for the light reading in your council packets this time around. It's a pretty lengthy document. But part of the process is the public outreach. Public outreach we did through a couple of different ways. There was online survey through Survey Monkey. We used social media. We used public meetings at the disaster, or Emergency Services Council, as well as the Disaster Preparedness Fair. And we had a great deal of public input on what the public expected us to do in preparation for disasters. What they want us to do is strengthen infrastructure, strengthen the critical facilities, so that way we still have our fire stations in power and water systems in place after a disaster, and provide better public information and that public outreach to our community. Once we get this plan done, and this plan, the stage that it's at now, is we have gone through the whole process, we've developed the draft plan, and we, the process is that we submit it to California Office of Emergency Services for a pre-read, basically, and then it gets sent up to FEMA for approval. Once that plan gets to FEMA, they say, okay, this plan looks good to us, it's approved, pending adoption. And that's the phase that we're at now. So, once you get an approved plan, it's not a, we're not locked into, into any action at all. What it is, is we have a maintenance phase. So now that we have a plan in place, we can identify and move forward with projects. So if we want to take action on something that we identified in our mitigation plans, such as flooding in a particular area of town, we can choose to proceed with that. And then what would happen is, we would put together a new report, a new grant application, and report to you all about what we're doing, and seek that money for that flooding project. If there's a project that we didn't identify at all through the process of the original mitigation plan, we still have the ability to add those projects. And then we can also decide that we want to drop projects if we choose not to take action with them. So, part of the maintenance process is keeping track of the grant funding that's available to us out there, constant communication with other agencies, making sure that we're on top of what grant money is available, and annual reporting. So being part of this countywide process, we're going to be doing a reporting process annually, and every city's going to report back saying this is what we've taken action on, and this is what we're going to be moving forward with. And again, we're not locked into any particular thing as far as what's in the plan. We've covered a lot of items from earthquake type of dangers to flooding, severe weather. So for the city of San Carlos, you go through a risk ranking. So what this means is, it's a combination of frequency versus impact. So while earthquakes are very low frequency, maybe once every 100 years, the impact is regional. So it ranks as the first and biggest hazard to the city of San Carlos. That was followed by flood, wildfire, severe weather, landslide, drought, and dam failure. Now, the dam failure is really more applicable to agencies that are near us, but it's in the plan, in the general plan. So that was actually specifically ranked by what we have going on in the city and what historical information we have. So we have a number of actions that we want to take within the next five years. So if this plan goes into effect today, and then over the next five years, some of our action items that we're going to be moving forward with are listed here. So this plan describes some priorities. Now, one of the things, there's two things in here that we were not required, or there's a requirement to put climate change in the plan, and what we're going to do about that. But there's not any good modeling on that yet that they're still working on. And the other thing is human-caused events that we're not required to, but we put that information in there. But what we're going to be doing is continuing with studies related to sea level rise. That's something that we'll be working on, on a, on a regional basis. Looking very closely at flood control projects. Communications is always a big issue during disaster response. We can look at that further as well. We can always look at hardening or relocating critical infrastructure, and that includes city facilities and fire stations, and then working with our other local agencies and the communities. One of the advantages that we actually have is because if I'm going to be coming to you looking for permission to proceed with a grant application is, FEMA loves when things are multi-jurisdictional. So if we come to them and we say, we have an issue that affects both Redwood City and San Carlos, and we're going to be working together collaboratively to pursue that, that makes us very competitive in that process. At the federal level, there's basically a big pot of money that they set aside each year, and it's a competitive process among all the cities within the nation. And whoever has a mitigation plan on file and has good information that they can put together in their grant application, that works better. And being multi-jurisdictional is one of those big items that is very important. And we have the advantage that we're almost automatically multi-jurisdictional because of the way our public safety is here. So for the city council, the, the item for us tonight is, we're at the point where our plan has been approved pending adoption. So this plan has already been approved by FEMA, California OES. It's already been adopted by the city of Redwood City at our council meeting last week, and the county has also adopted the plan as well. So once we adopt the resolution, this becomes our approved mitigation plan, and we communicate that to FEMA. And then what you can expect is we would come back to you once we work with staff and identify projects that we wish to move forward with, and come to you with further reports for that. So it's a very complex process, kind of condensed down to about five minutes. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them for you.
All right. Thank you. Questions for the chief? Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, chief. By the way, just for my colleagues' benefit, I had the opportunity to do the farmer's market with the chief over the weekend. So this is one of the topics we talked about quite extensively. So this is my second time through, and I still don't really understand it. No, I'm just kidding. The, the, one question I had as you were, you were going through this, chief, was, there are certain parts of San Carlos, and I'm thinking specifically of a section along El Camino, sort of on the southern end of the town, which are prone to significant flooding during intense rainy seasons, probably having to do with drainage issues and whatnot. As I recall from our conversation at the farmer's market, damage to private property caused by flooding is not what's covered by this, correct?
No, if we can prevent damage to private property by improving city infrastructure, that is a valid project, so.
That's what I was, that's great. That's actually what I wanted to check. So, there may very well be a way, and Jay would have to be, you know, have input to this, to actually have a positive effect there by upgrading the stormwater management system, essentially.
That's correct. So, and also, any, any type of waterway that runs through multi-jurisdictions, we would work with our partners in those areas, too. But yes, we can improve city-owned facilities, and there's a benefit on the private property side, that's true.
Okay. So would something like that be something that potentially we could try and secure a grant for? I know you can't say whether or not we'd actually get it, but, but...
Those types of projects are identified within our, our plan as something that we can pursue.
Okay. Because I recall one, one property owner who has suffered a bit, quite a bit of damage over the years, had, had come in not too long ago to address the council, and the problem, he said, has been around for decades. And I don't know whether that means we've applied and been turned down, or whether the facts hadn't come together or whatever. But it would definitely be something I hope staff can look into, just to see whether or not we could have a positive effect there. And it's not just one property owner. It actually, it, in some instances, actually impedes traffic along El Camino because it just ends up flooding the whole place quite badly.
We can certainly look at that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Further questions? Is there any member of the public wishing to speak on this item? I'll just say our thanks to you and your team for putting together a thorough report designed to help keep us safe.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to adopt Resolution 2016 dash...
107.
107, a resolution of the city council, city of San Carlos, adopting the hazard mitigation plan update.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Sully?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
And Mayor Johnson?
Yes. All right, we'll move on to item 10B, consideration of adopting a resolution establishing commercial linkage fee levels and setting an effective date for new commercial development in San Carlos. Good evening, Mr. Seve.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Since the city council has completed its second reading of the ordinance, a resolution is required to set the fees. And these are the fees you see on the right-hand side of your screen. And as part of this resolution, it would also set an effective date of March 16th to allow applicants that are currently in the process to have a feasible amount of time to complete their applications. And that concludes my remarks, and I'm available to answer any questions of the mayor or the city council.
All right, thanks, Al. Bob?
Sorry, Al, that last sentence you said, or the next to last sentence?
Yeah.
A reasonable time, I'm sorry, what, what does that mean?
That means that the effective date of the fees would be March 16th.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're trying to extend out so folks have November, December, January, February, four or five, four or five months to get their stuff done.
That's correct, yes.
Thank you very much.
All right, any further questions? Any members of the public wishing to speak on this item? For the benefit of the public, we've extensively discussed this issue at previous council meetings, and this is just a step in the process. So I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will recommend that we move to adopt Resolution 2016 dash...
108.
108, a resolution of the city council, city of San Carlos, establishing commercial linkage fee levels and setting an effective date for new commercial developments in San Carlos.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Sully?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
No.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes. And Al, did you have further comments you wanted to make about item 10C?
No.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to move to adopt Resolution 2016 dash...
109.
109, a resolution of the city council, city of San Carlos, establishing an area standard wage policy, providing a 25% commercial linkage fee reduction for qualifying projects in San Carlos.
Second.
I'll ask if anybody wishes to make any public comment on this item. Hearing none, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Sully?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
No.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
And Mayor Johnson?
Yes. And with that, at 8:08, we have finished our business for the evening, and we are adjourned.